Don't be so judgmental.
I am, sorry.
I agree with you, but I mean, don't be so judgmental.
Seven oh five, we're back in open session. Item number fourteen. Second reading and adoption on ordinance one eighty-six, amendment six, an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, changing sections two, civil service commission functions, duties, procedures and rules, and section three, division of the civil service.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion at this time to have to instruct staff to review, uh, the, the ordinance and to come back, uh, with any changes if necessary.
Second.
Sorry.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Going back to presentation. Item number five, presentation from Roberto Ransome, operations director of the Hunt Institute for Global Competitiveness, University of Texas. Um, Mr. Ransome couldn't be here today, so at this time I'd like to, if anybody would entertain a motion to postpone for the next meeting?
Motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number six, presentation by city manager regarding July's two thousand eighteen monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm gonna provide you the, um, highlights for the month of July two thousand eighteen for the departments. Municipal Courts Department collected eighty thousand ninety-two dollars in the month of July, received three hundred and seventy-eight citations from Socorro PD, sixty-four citations from the Department of Public Safety, and fifty-nine ordinance violations. Our HR department celebrated July's birthdays and anniversaries on August tenth. Employees of the month was Myrna Workman. There was no civil service meeting for the month of July. There was two separations, one public works supervisor and one police officer. There was three new hires in the month of July, which was Aurora Molina as a dispatcher, Alejandra Balades, grants coordinator, Maria Cobos, part-time labor. Our Parks and Public Works Department, uh, cleaned Bovi Lateral on City's right-of-way, repaired Cinco on Bovi Road. The milling, paving, striping, ADA ramping, trenching, and shoulder work of Buford Road was, (laugh) was completed. Uh, the flashers were programmed for all schools in the city, throughout the city. Pond hole repairs on Bovi Vineyard and Peters, and continue to maintain mo and groom all city parks and ponding areas. And just as a highlight for the month of August, we do have a new public works director, Joel González, and public works supervisor Alejandro Balad- uh, Alba. Our police department received two thousand one hundred, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven calls for service in the month of July, and our officers, uh, to keep them in compliance with certification of TICOS, uh, continue to attend trainings. Our city clerk department conducted and prepared minutes for two regular meetings on July fifth and July nineteenth, received thirty-eight open records requests and responded to thirty-two, and prepared two publications. Planning and zoning department total collected for the month was eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, issued a hundred and nine permits, thirty-seven registrations, twelve applications, and eight letters. Recreations Department, um, did Movies Under the Stars, Coco, and Cars. They had a Texas Tech medical student vis- visit and toured the city, prepared for back-to-school event, attended the local mitigation planning workshop, and the total visitors for Rio Vista were a thousand two, and total for Chayo Podaca were three hundred and four. Our IT department helped, uh, repair nine-one-one lines' phone system, installed and configured new switch at the Park and Public Works yard to increase network access, and assisted the Parks and Public Works Department's daily operations. Our grants department for July, um, had logged in a hundred and seventy-eight hours of service, had a week-long STEM for children. Um, it was a science camp that was provided to students. There was a total of eighteen students that attended. Uh, researching and data analysis on economic development, exploring the feasibility of implementing a specific economic development such as an enterprise zone program. Those are the highlights for the department. I don't know if you have any questions? Concerns? No? Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number eight, public hearing on the city of Socorro's property tax rate of point seven-five-two-four-five-seven for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Seven eleven, public hearing is now open.
I'm wondering what the city has done to tighten and lower the city budget? Where have cuts been made, uh, for the budget to, to be lowered? Have we, uh, reduced paper costs? See a lot of papers on your desks. Lot of copies made. Um, I'm just wondering what reductions we've done before trying to increase the budget? What have we done to try to lower our cost as a city? Also, how can we be assured that the revenue that is gonna come from this tax rate increase will be used to hire the much-needed positions that I'm pretty sure are the reasons why you're giving constituents as to why the tax increase is needed? Whether it's code enforcers, officers, uh, park laborers, um, everything that's always said during the meetings that I've listened to that is mostly what Mr. Rodríguez says, fortunately he's not here, that's what's needed for the city? How can we be assured that that money is actually gonna be directed towards that? Um, is the budget going to reflect that that's where the money is going to? Um, is it just gonna be a free-for-all and if something comes up, um, the budget will be rerouted to something else? I'm just curious as a constituent, 'cause it doesn't, uh, make sense to not have a plan moving forward. And so I'm just hoping that the city does have a plan, and I'm hoping that we're still making efforts, whether or not this increase happens, to lower our costs, uh, whether it's at an office, at the office level, at labor, uh, level, renewable energy, uh, so many, so many revenues, avenues, that we can try to lower our costs to try to make our budget better. I'm just wondering what the city's doing to do that. Thank you.
Seven fourteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number nine, public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter two, article four, division eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to separate the membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission from the membership of the Buildings and Standards Commission. Seven fourteen, public hearing is now open. Seven fifteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number ten, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter two, article four, division eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to separate the membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission from the membership of the Buildings and Standards Commission.
Motion to adopt the ordinance to, uh, of, excuse me, the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter two, article four, division eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to separate the membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission from the membership of the Buildings and Standards Commission.
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number eleven, public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter six, article four of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to make city council the final authority on substandard structures and nuisance cases. Seven sixteen, public hearing is now open. Seven sixteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number twelve, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter six, article four of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to make city council the final authority on substandard structures and nuisance cases.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, Madam Mayor, uh, to adopt the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending chapter six, article four of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to make city council the final authority on substandard structures and nuisance cases.
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance, an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tract eight B, block seventeen, Socorro Grant from R one, single-family residential to R two, medium-density residential for a quadruplex.
Mayor. Item fifteen through the nineteenth are just introductions. We will have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. Do you have any motions?
Motion to have the introduction, first reading, and call for a public hearing on the, uh, proposed amendment for the city of Socorro master plan, rezoning tract eight B, block seventeen, Socorro Grant, from R one, single-family, to R two, medium-density residential for a quadruplex.
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Uh, item number sixteen, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance, an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of a portion of tract fifteen, block four, Socorro Grant, lots one dash eleven, block two, East Lake Valley subdivision, for a commercial development.
Motion to approve, um... No, no.
Okay, we can do that.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second. Wasn't sure. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance, an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of tracts two A, two A one, and two A three, block twenty-eight, Socorro Grant from A one, agricultural to RE, rural estates for a subdivision plot.
Motion for introduction, first reading, calling for a public hearing on said, uh, area.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance, an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of lot nineteen, block four, Mary Lou Park at ten seven twenty-four, Lydia Road, from R one, single-family residential to R two, medium-density residential for a multifamily complex.
Motion to approve? Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance, an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and the proposed rezoning of tract twelve, block eighteen, Socorro Grant, ten two seventy-seven, Socorro Road, from R one, single-family residential to C two, general commercial for a business office and warehouse.
Motion for the introduction, first reading, calling for a public hearing on said area.
Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion on action of approval request to waive the event permit fee for the annual homecoming parade of Socorro High School.
Motion to approve. Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion on action of approval request for the conditional use permit for a retail shopping center pursuant to section forty-six dash four fifty-two, section four, to allow uses permitted or conditional in the C two, general commercial zone on Lee Clark survey, two ninety-three, ABST sixty-two fifty-seven, tract six A on eleven twenty Horizon Boulevard, to allow a commercial shopping center.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Michael Mina, I'm the city planner. And so, what I'd like to do right now, I wanted to present myself. This is the first city council meeting. Uh, I have been working diligently over the last week. This is my second week. Uh, so there is a learning curve there, so what I would like to do is, uh, have Mr. Terrazas, uh, speak on the case, and actually all the other cases up to number twenty-five.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a conditional use permit request. Um, this property is located at eleven twenty Horizon Boulevard to allow a commercial shopping center. This property is zone M one, light industrial. Under section four fifty-two, it says that it requires a conditional use permit in order to operate as commercial. This property is right there. They're building a warehouse and an office space, and right here where you see these, uh, marks, this is where they're proposing a commercial shopping center. Because the property is classified industrial, that's why they're asking for the conditional use permit, so they can build the shopping center.
Mr. Turan?
Uh, Joe, there was, um, some flooding issues, I think, a couple of years ago with this subdivision, or this, uh, commercial park. Did they take care of their, um, ponding?
Yes, sir, they created a pond right here in the back of the property. They graded the entire lot. They are having minor flooding issues that are being addressed by the neighbors. The, there's a minor stream of water that flows this way. Um, but they're, uh, already taking care of it. On their, in their property, they already graded the land into this pond over here in the back. And the first time that they came into our office, they wanted to build a pond and start draining water into the arroyo. They were not allowed to do that. That's why they moved the pond over here.
'Cause, 'cause I remember a few years ago, didn't that pond overflow and flood part of the, uh, uh, trailer park?
No, sir, that's a different area, it's outside the...
Okay.
The city limit.
Mr. Bennett?
Is that the best place to put that pond?
Yes, sir. So the shopping center they're proposing is gonna be over here closer to, uh, Horizon. They are, they, right now they do have a case with the border adjustments, they're asking for a variance to build the shopping center closer to the roadway. The, i- it still hasn't been approved, but the land use, this is what we're asking for, or they're asking for tonight.
Ms. Elavos?
Mr. Terrazas, how much of that land is going to be paved and, and, uh, how much of it is going to stay, uh, as is? And if it is paved and as is, um, the grading of it, will it change? And if, are they responsible to continue the grading where it does not change?
Correct. Yes, uh, they already, uh, did the grading that they're, they're gonna do on the property there. According to them, they're gonna pave about sixty percent of the lot. Because they're also, not only the, the, you wanna, not only do they wanna use the commercial space in the front, they also wanna have a trucking company business right here in the back. That's the purpose of having the warehouse. But everything in the back, most of the space is gonna be used for the large vehicles, the trucks.
So, so they must, if they keep it as is with dirt, they must continue, uh, continue to, um... Because when it rains, that, that, uh, dirt shifts.
No, that dirt is gonna be paved.
So, so which part is sixty percent that's going to be paved?
Uh, about, most or minus up to here.
From Horizon to there?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and what's gonna happen to that dirt in the back?
That dirt is not gonna be moved any, anymore. That's the way it's gonna be designed, that's the way they're proposing their design.
Grains will not move that, shift that dirt?
No, ma'am. They haven't shown a, any, uh, grading or any other proposed, uh, improvements in the back.
The reason I ask that, because if, if that grading does move, it's going to affect grades, hopefully, on each side.
They, uh, they already have some flumes where the water is gonna be draining into the ponds. That's why the dirt is not supposed to move. Any questions?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion on action to deny the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and the proposed rezoning of tract twelve, block eighteen, Socorro Grant, ten two seventy-seven, Socorro Road, from R one, single-family residential to C two, general commercial for a business office and warehouse. Would somebody entertain a motion to delete? We've already, uh, introduced it on item nineteen.
Motion to delete. Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion on action to approve request of preliminary plat for Flor- Flor del Rio replat A, being a replat of lot one, block fifteen, Flor del Rio, located at eleven six twenty-one, Flor Marcia.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, discussion on action on the preliminary plat approval for Grijalva Baya subdivision, being a portion of tracts two A, two A one, and two A three, block twenty-eight, Socorro Grant.
Motion to approve.
Question?
Second.
Mayor and council, um, this application, the, the applicant requested that we delete their application. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to deny it, but the applicant doesn't wanna file the subdivision plat anymore. They're asking for us to just delete it.
Really?
Ms. Elavos?
What, what's the purpose that, um, we, or, or the court would not allow them to, to, uh...
That was a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we presented an email from the applicant where they're asking for us to delete the application. They don't wanna pursue the subdivision. Uh, the reason for that is because they, some of the recommendations that the Planning and Zoning Commission imposed were out of their budget. They cannot afford to pave any roadways, so they don't wanna go, they, they don't wanna move forward with the application anymore.
So they wanna have a subdivision with unbegable?
They wanted to, uh, create a, a small subdivision or a minor plat. But at this point, with all the conditions that were imposed, or they were asking, uh, they can't afford to do it.
Wow.
Did they make any reference that whether they were, at one point, coming back with it, or coming back with something else?
No, they just asked us to delete it, to just cancel the whole thing.
And were they asking for an onsite, at one point, onsite ponding, or, or, or...
They were asking for onsite ponding, yes, ma'am.
Would you amend your motion?
Motion to delete. Second. Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-six, discussion on action to announce the date on which city council would take final action on the tax rate on the two thousand nineteen municipal budget.
Mayor, we're, uh, asking for September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, be the day that we adopt our budget. Two thousand eighteen.
Motion to accept September thirteenth, uh, two thousand eighteen, as the day with, which the council will take final action on the tax rate for two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Ms. Elavos?
This, um, since it says two thousand seventeen, we're okay?
That's why we're making it part of the motion.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombiya Lo.
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, presentation and discussion regarding tax rate calculations, revenues, and expenditures for the city of Socorro's proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Mayor and council, included in your, uh, in your, um, materials, uh, was the adjusted budget from, from our previous discussions. Just to, to hit on the highlights, we are using the rollback rate in calculating the property tax revenue for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, uh, which provided an increase of about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which i- in relative terms is twenty-two dollars more a year for a property of about ninety thousand dollars. That's what the increase, uh, redounds to. Included in, in the, uh, in the budget itself, there is a two percent COLA. If you look closely, yeah, 'cause again, the, the font's really small, but if you look closely on the worksheets for the, uh, for the employees, you can see a column added at the very end on the right side, uh, for the COLA, the, the two percent. We applied it to some of the employees, not all of the employees, depending on whether or not they've been there a while or in their particular category, like, the city manager doesn't get the two percent because she has a separate contract. We made absolutely no changes to the benefits, uh, based on, uh, our, our, um, feeling that, that the, um, the benefits would come in about what they are now, and, and from what we've seen, uh, that, that may be a good, yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Uh, on the COLA?
Yes.
Is there a, a baseline or a defendable way of how this, how it was, uh, uh...
Calculated?
Arrived at?
Yes, uh, we went through the Social Security Administration, and they have a two percent cost of living increase. Is that what you...
I understand that, but I guess in terms of identi- identification of the actual employee to receive the increase, because, uh, maybe I'm, I misunderstood, it seemed like some yes, some no, in terms of who's gonna receive the increase, and so...
Well, i- if if they were just recently hired?
But what it, what does recently mean? See, that that's...
Well, if they're in their six-month probationary period, they wouldn't qualify for the two percent cost of living. And also, the city manager does not qualify for the cost of living.
I I just wanna make sure that we have that in public, that they understand. It's not that we're going through it just, oh,
No, no.
You get a raise, and you get a raise, and you don't.
No, if they're on their probationary period, that they don't get the cost of living.
Thank you.
Also included in the budget that has not been changed since our last discussion are all the items in the wish list. Okay, so if you look at the the combined, that includes everything that was on the wish list for both. I believe the the wish list, uh, was mostly concerned with the police, uh, and with some equipment. And also with, um, parks and public works, also with with some equipment that is needed to to help them be more efficient.
Also, I'm not a...
Mr. Perez?
And I know I'm, I'm just being picky. Let's not call it a wish list, because that kinda sends the wrong message to the voters, that they're, we're just really nearly, uh,
Wishing for stuff.
Getting, yeah, wishing or identifying things. I'd rather, uh, you know, call it maybe identify needs, or, you know, something, something that's more, a little bit more technical.
Yes.
Because when you have a wish list, that that kinda has a bad connotation, that's just me. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Castillo.
Okay, uh, I'm open to whatever you wanna call it. What do you wanna call it?
Uh, identified needs?
The identified needs list.
Well, something.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Yeah, I like it. And, um,
Ms. Elavos?
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I know it's gonna take a little bit longer, but can we highlight in a different color next time than the item? Well, I guess it's gonna say now identify needs versus versus what we were looking at the, the last amendment. Does that make sense? Never mind. We'll, we'll, we'll see the new name on it, and then we can identify it ourselves.
Okay.
And that's a cost savings.
I'm sorry?
That's a cost savings for you.
Oh, okay. The the bottom line of the budget, especially for the M and O, I think all the others are are gonna be, uh, essentially, whatever we receive, we will spend, or actually, it's the reverse, whatever we spend, we'll receive. But we're still showing that we're going to be digging into the reserves approximately eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Again, with the identified needs lists, what that does is that it gives us the opportunity to purchase these things in the fiscal year. However, if things change, you know, it it, we we don't have to purchase these things. We're not required to spend that money. And so, i- in the, in the past few years, we've actually come in well under budget, and we expect that to continue. It's just, it's just giving us an opportunity, uh, to spend if if it's, if it's, uh, um, to our benefit.
If it continues to become, if it continues to be a priority.
Yes, yes.
Any questions? But we haven't changed anything from our last workshop. We pretty much left everything the same.
Mr. Perez? No?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need a motion, 'cause it's just a presentation and discussion item.
Item number twenty-eight. Discussion on action to approve a proposed interlocal agreement with the County of El Paso Ambulance Services. We met with our county judge, and we're waiting a response, so we can postpone until we have a response from county.
So, motion to postpone at this time?
Second.
We can postpone until we receive the interlocal agreement, uh, from them.
All of them, I motion to postpone until we receive the, uh, the interlocal agreement, the proposed interlocal agreement from the County of El Paso.
Second.
Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.
Dr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine. Discussion on action on status on chief of police requesting to continue recruitment.
I have very sad news. Our, um, candidate for the chief of police position, we received a letter that she's declining the position due to a undesirable health, uh, condition that just arose. And and, uh, she needs to take care of her health before she can, uh, move anywhere. So, we are asking council, um, if we can start the recruitment, starting tomorrow. Our brochure is ready to go. Um, it was an unfortunate, uh, she seems very excited. And and I do really think that it it was because of our process. Remember, we we offered the position contingent upon, she meets all the requirements to come work with us, and I think something surfaced, and, um, that is not allowing her to come work for the City of Socorro, so...
So, I'm gonna give motion to reopen the recruitment process for the chief of police.
Second. Yes.
Dr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombría López.
Yes.
Item number thirty. Discussion on action on requesting HP Communication Incorporated to relocate their equipment from Cities Right Away, located at one fifty-one South Moon Road to the proposed location.
Motion to approve.
Actually, we have an update.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, we did a little bit of research, the attorney came back, and there is ways that we can request written notices, but there's things that we have to identify and ask council, since you are the policymakers, how you wanna proceed. The issues that need to be addressed is what type of notice would be required? Is it a handbill, written notice to the property, property owner, or other? Who would receive the notice? The immediately adjacent property owners, tenants, those within a certain distance of the work area, or other? Who would give the notice? The city or the party performing the work? And what penalty, if any, for failure to provide? Exemptions for emergency work or other exemptions? So there's things that need to be taken into account before creating a, I guess, a policy for installing utilities on Cities Right Away. And just as an update, Mr. Perez, is, um, there was an equipment that was placed on Cities Right Away, and some of the residents were complaining, 'cause they didn't want it in front of their property. They felt that in a fur- and further out, they could have, this equipment could have been placed. But nobody notified them, okay? Uh, we did go back, and there's a Texas, Texas law that protects these utility companies, and Cities Right Away are used for utilitiesments for the betterment of the community. So council, directed staff, and Ms. Colombría López, we met today. I had posed the question to the attorney to see if if we can impose, uh, the notice to be sent out by the utility company. And and those were the questions that came back to us for approval. I have sent out an email to the utility company and asking them, um, to relocate. If not, what is the process and what is the cost associated with that? That way, we can get more information and bring it back to council.
So they all just made motion?
And they couldn't, like, and so what I'd like to add, um, in this case, our, um, our couple is elderly, and so, um, they are having a hard time, uh, coming out of moon, 'cause it's it's very narrow, and this thing is right at, right at the curb. And so, I don't think they took into consideration their driveway. They have to actually pull up further up, which, uh, now they're on the street, trying to figure, you know, which way to go, so...
So I, I'll, for me, just my motion, I don't know what else.
So, basic, can we just, um, postpone to the next meeting?
I'm sorry?
Should, should, can we postpone to the next meeting?
Craig, just, uh, provide us some direction of of the questions that were asked on how you want us to proceed. I did, I did do a little research, um, and the notices are very vague in just letting them know we're working on this area from this day to this day. Uh, this equipment is coming up, but that's pretty much as much as the notices that I've researched online. So I don't know if that's something that, or if you wanna propose a...
Well, I think that would notify them, and they, it would alert them that something's happening. And if they're, if if it's that important to them, then they'll, you know, communicate with whoever the letter is addressed from.
Craig, I guess the only question that I have is that by the time the notice is sent, is because the permit has already been issued.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so if the permit has already been issued, the utility company has already have the authority to install. So I think it's just gonna create more friction for council, because they're gonna call their elected officials, and the permit has already been issued. I don't know if there's anything that you would like to add. We've had several discussions.
Michael Mina, the city planner. So I think with regard to when it comes to utility location, as I understand it, is that the state has already set forth some decisions in allowing the utility companies the rights of way. So one of the things that we were talking about is, uh, I've been examining over the last week, the comprehensive plan. There's been some recommendations, uh, that haven't gone forward since the council adopted the plan. One of those things is to identify a strategic plan, um, and that would start at the neighborhood level and then ultimately rise to a regional level to ensure that there's nexus of the need that is being prescribed by this body. The utility location and things of that nature would become a function of that as well. There is elements out there that qualify for several type of federal funding, and so those are the discussions that I was having with the city manager.
And so, at what point does the, uh, safety of the residents, uh, becomes an issue? You know, in this case, this is the issue. And there was another spot, just, you know, a couple of feet away, that would have been perfect. They're not saying no. They're just saying, had they notified us, we would have said, yeah, right here, it's perfect. It isn't, you know, it's not in the way they can see. And clearly, if you look at the the rumpel, it goes, it goes this way. So where they're saying, it it would have been that, uh, contraption, or box, or poles, or whatever, would have been in a little bit more versus they're right in the path of you, if you look at them, they're right in the path of, um, of moon. And if you're driving fast, or if you're not, you know, watching what you're doing, it curves, and it's right at the curb. And that's why they put those big, big, uh, cement poles in front of it, uh, to protect the, the, the box. Obviously, they knew that it could potentially be hit. It's too close to the road, uh, the road is very narrow. And the, the elderly couple that lives there is having a hard time pulling in and out of their, their driveway.
Right. I I guess what I would say is that when it comes to utility companies and the things that are granted by the state legislators, it gives them primacy. And so ultimately, is that if they're gonna make the location and have utilities there, uh, they have the absolute right to do that. One thing that we're examining is how we are examining the development of subdivisions, how we plat them, and how the utilities go in. So those are the things that we need to, as a community, understand what the priority is, 'cause you all can exact designing when it comes to subdivision and those locations. But I think that, for the most part, is that safety should be at the forefront. I think that as we start to examine the comprehensive plan and develop this ten-year strategic plan is to address those issues, which will also require us to make changes to the code.
I just think that at this time, we should delete this item. We should allow Mr. Medina to, more days on the job, to propose those changes. I think to prevent future issues like this in the future. But I think that the state legislator does give the right to the utilities, and we shouldn't, um, force additional requests than the state legislator does on a local level.
And we have already asked that utility company to relocate. So let's see what they respond, and then we'll bring it back to council if there's a cost associated with it, and
Okay.
So you can help those, uh, residents that you're...
Right. And and I completely, completely agree. But when there's a si- safety issue of one of our residents, there has to be an exception to the rule. So, and and I'm sure it's not one size fits all.
Mr. Perez?
I think that also, in terms of the fact that, I I can only speak for my area. I live in my area for a lot of the homes, that the homes are right a lot to the, the street, and there really isn't a whole lot of pride in it. And I think that that's what goes to think they'll be taken into consideration. Not only us, but the utilities, and some hoodens, um, when they're, uh, mining or installing, they're good.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Any motions?
Are you ready? Uh, motion to, to, um...
Well, I, I, I believe it's a...
Oh, okay. Um...
I'm trying to think, if I, if I, if we deny it, we we can still bring it back. What do you think would be best right now, Jim, to do? To postpone it, deny it?
You can delete it, you can deny it, you can postpone it, I don't, legally, I don't...
And either way, it can be brought back?
No, legally, I mean, I, legally, I would just delete it, 'cause I don't think there's, I mean, you know, this really has spent a good time around lawyers who are knowledgeable about land use regulation and, and utility law. You know, you're, what, what, this, what you said, or what Mr. Perez said, I mean, it's just, I can't, I mean, how much I agree with you, because it's obviously the logic one makes so much sense. And to me, my legal answer to that is, that's an excellent reason why the state legislature should, should change the statute. But they have, and the statute says what it says.
Motion to delete. Second.
Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.
Dr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
I don't like it, but, aye.
Yes. Do we have anything for item thirty-one and thirty-two?
Come in.
Motion to delete item number thirty-one and thirty-two and thirty-three.
Second.
Ivan Colombría López?
Yes.
Dr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombría López.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Seventy fifty-three, meeting adjourned.
We didn't even have to use order three twenty.
And I said, um, you found your ring, congratulations, you found your ring.
Okay, you wanna do this?
Where was it?
You wanna take that for your friend?
No, you take it.
Okay. You don't spread. Thank you.
You happy? Chief, pardon me?
I wasn't there. I'm here, it's fine.
I know, hey, you gotta take care of the city. It's a tough job, somebody gotta do it. Huh? You know, when I heard that, this is, I hate you.
Oh, and you forgot. Well, thank God. Yes, um, Mr. Medina, I said, did you check your area, was, were you okay? Yes, welcome to me. No, no, and I said, if you have a complaint, I know you'd respond right away. No, no, and I said, if you have a, I know he would respond right away.